All this meeting to order. Please rise for the invocation. We have Father Yarik here this morning from Saint Leo, the Great Church. Good morning, Father.
Good morning.
Well, mindful of the trust placed in this council, let us turn to the Lord for strength and guidance. Let us pray. God of wisdom and mercy, we thank you for the gift of this beautiful city, for the heritage we have received and for the hope we entrust to the future. So look with kindness upon our mayor, our council, and all who serve the people with diligence and care. Grant them clarity of mind, steadiness of heart, and the grace to listen with patience and humility. As they look to the years ahead, guide their plans toward the common good. Teach them to balance growth with a small-town spirit that makes this community a home. Bless their efforts to preserve parks and green spaces where children can laugh, families can gather, and neighbors can grow into friends. Make us all faithful stewards of creation and guardians of the beauty entrusted to our care. And pour out your blessing upon the people of this diverse community. Strengthen the bonds of respect and civility among us. Give us the courage to speak truth with kindness, to disagree without bitterness, and to place the needs of the vulnerable at the center of our decisions. Watch over first responders, teachers, business owners, and all who labor for the well-being of our city. And may every choice made in this chamber be always marked by justice, dignity, and peace that endures. And we ask this through your holy name. Amen.
Do you want me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Purdon, and he asked to be excused today.
All right. Is there any public comment on agenda items this morning? Public comment? Anybody? All right. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Any comments on the consent agenda? All right. Moving on to public hearings.
This is the second reading of an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs extending the electric utility franchise and rate structure for Florida Power and Light Company and providing for an effective date.
All right. Is there a motion or do we need to have any discussion on this?
Is any public comments? I would just add that Charlotte Miller from FPL is here if you have any questions. But again, this is just continuing the current rate structure and extending the term.
Any public comment?
Motion to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Moving on to city attorney items.
Microphone, microphone. I gotta sing into the microphone.
What was that, Derek? I couldn't hear you.
All right. The next item was an item requested by Councilman Corey. This is a resolution regarding Senate Bill 180 that effectively lets those people know in the city to that the city is following the requirements of Senate Bill 180 as respect to the look-back provisions and the accumulation of value for a determination 50 percent rule.
All right.
So in, just in plain talk?
So the easiest way to say this, if there was a property that was in the coastal zone that had been damaged, we would not be looking back five years or whatever. The current provisions of our code currently call for for the accumulation of value, all the improvements they've made for calculating towards that 50 percent value. So if they had a restoration permit that required a bunch of repairs post-storm, but they'd also put on a roof recently and done some other major improvements, we would be looking at it in an isolated pop. And that is, that is a process that's still being evaluated with respect to the FEMA rules. And that, and we'll get, we get updates on that, we'll pass that on. But right now, we're complying with the state law.
Great. Thank you.
There was a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You made the motion.
I made the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Anything else, Derek?
No, I have nothing else.
All right, city manager items.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to bring forward our Director of Finance, Lisa Greggs-Roth, so as to give our presentation update on the next fiscal year budget.
Good morning.
We're here today to show you our monthly financial report for June, and then also we're going to have some budget discussions. As we show you each month, so we can clearly identify positive trends or other trends that we may need to keep in our sights, we compare current fiscal year revenue to the immediately preceding fiscal year. This allows us to allocate from monthly, some months or higher collections than others as we proceed through our fiscal year. Happy to say that on this slide, the most significant data point, half-cent sales tax. We had, the first few months of the fiscal year, we've been trending a little, a little like seven percent down. We're seeing a positive trend in that, so hopefully that will continue. And we do budget in line with the state projections, so we feel certain that we will meet our budgetary projections in that area. General fund operating expenses, these are our regular recurring operating expenses as we had budgeted and planned and been talking about. This fiscal year, we do see some inflationary trends continuing, and that's consistent with what we're hearing across the state. Hopefully, next fiscal year, we'll see some of that subsiding, but we are watching and planning for that. Restricted revenues, these are our revenues. Again, we show you current fiscal year to date as compared to the immediately preceding fiscal year. These are revenues that are earmarked for certain specific projects and certain types of projects. As I talk about regularly, the first data point there, our downtown area revenue sharing, that is our partnership that we had with Lee County. Even though this year zero, last year shows an amount, that's a positive thing because we fully maxed out our agreement. That was our growth in taxable value in our downtown area, being set aside to pay the debt for the capital improvements. Very positive news. We have that money, as you'll see on a future slide, sitting in our bank, ready to pay that debt service off. So very excited about that. Our building fees, you could see a positive trend. That was a little different than we'd seen earlier in the fiscal year. And our road impact fees, again, positive, and those are based upon people coming over the timing of people constructing, going in for a permit for new construction at community development. A little difficult to project, but we're very pleased to see those trends. Cash balances, we show you current cash balance and investment balance now, and we show you the two years immediately preceding. This helps us clearly show that we are accumulating funds to pay for our capital improvement projects. We do typically, where we can, like to pay as you go. So that means we accumulate the funds as we're planning out the capital projects and the fund is, are sitting there, ready to go when we're ready to do construction. That helps us reduce the cost, the debt service cost, interest costs and such on our borrowings. A continued next slide, cash balances. These are our restricted cash balances. As you can see, park impact fees, stormwater, building fees, those are sitting there waiting for, mostly waiting for our construction timing. The last data point, wanted to call to your attention, funds reserved for debt. That includes not only our downtown revenue sharing money that we partner with Lee County, sitting there waiting to pay that off, but then also our $2 million that we receive graciously from the state that will help us in the event we need to have some disaster recovery. Budget discussions. Our budget calendar, today, we're going to chat about the budget. We have two more meetings after today. So those are, will be our public hearings as required by Florida statutes. They have to be after 5:01. So both of our September meetings will be at 5:30. So it's our regular Wednesday where we'll have our council meeting, September 3, 5:30, we'll have our tentative budget hearing. That is our mill rate vote by Florida statutes, that's the second of three. And then our final meeting in September, which will be our regular recurring Wednesday, but at 5:30, we'll have our final budget hearing with the mill rate vote. That will be our final millage rate vote, and this is consistent with Florida statutes timeline. Strategic priorities. Every time we talk about the budget, we want to make sure we restate for everyone and all of us here what our strategic priorities are, and as they have been adopted and updated by city council. These drive our operations and also drive our capital improvement program, our plan, our five- and 10-year plan. We categorize those in this manner so we can make sure that we're in line with our strategic priorities. State revenue projections, unfortunately, we don't have any new data to share with you. The state has indicated, they have given us the half-cent sales tax and municipal revenue sharing projections. Those were in line with what we had in the budget. We didn't need to make any adjustments for those, but we are still waiting for the state to release communication services tax and local option fuel tax. Again, the estimates that you have in your budget are based upon quarterly updates that we get from the economists at the state, so we probably don't feel there'll be adjustment noted, but we will be bringing those to you. And we'll have discussions next meeting as well to finalize those. We wanted to show you today previously discussed budget changes, because at the next meeting, you'll see a full budget draft again. So the two public hearings in September, you will see a full budget draft. So we wanted to give you the cumulative changes. There haven't been very many this year, but we did have, you'll recall, our budget draft that we presented to you in June was based upon June 1 taxable value numbers. Florida statute has a timeline that the property appraiser and every property appraiser in the state has to follow. So the first number that they give us is June 1, and then July 1, they give us an updated number. So when we had our July 1 number, pleasantly surprised, we had an increase. So you see that reflected here. So that will be incorporated in your budget and in your next draft, this will be in there. We also, at the last meeting, we approved a new grant agreement, positive grant agreement for our East Terry multi-use pathway. Because we received this grant agreement, we were required to move our matching funds forward in our CIP a year. So, and that was outlined in the green sheet from the last meeting, so we will be adding 270,000 in expenditures for year one in our capital improvement plan, but it was in year two before. So it was in the project. The total project cost did not go up at all as a result of this grant, but we just moved forward that city matching fund in order to enable us to receive that grant. And that's all that I have for you today, so I'll open it up for discussions and take any direction that you may have for us.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Great news. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask the community development come forward, John Dahmer, for the update on activity report for July.
Good morning. This will probably be the last time you see this exact format for our presentations because, as you've discussed previously, state statutes have changed, and review timelines are now dictated by statute, and even some of those that were dictated prior have now been reduced. So we have a whole new set of rules in which to follow. Also, we have updated and improved our phone systems. So now we have the ability to handle those through an app, so they should be ringing on our cell phones as well as in the office phone. So in the case of an emergency or some natural disaster, we have the ability to still operate with our office phones even though we're not actually there. So as you take this in, what I want everyone to kind of think about is, we are in a period now where we're receiving a lot of inspections for our development orders and beginning building work, but a lot of site work is where the activity is right now. So I know that some of you have kind of received some phone calls. We've had to wait a little bit longer than we thought to get some of our inspections done. It's because the number of inspections that we have for those engineering projects is significantly higher than it normally is. So you'll probably see the numbers reflected next month on our updated report that show that's kind of where a lot of our activities are going right now. So I've even threatened Jackie that maybe we've got to go out and do inspections ourselves, so we'll kind of see how that goes. So I don't know if there's any questions or comments or thoughts as we go forward, but we are now in a new world, and we're going to have to start adopting how we do business.
So is there going to be, in this new world, a way that folks can put their plans online?
That's going to be a conversation that we will have going forward. In fact, there are several things that need to come into place. One of them is electronic plans, submittal. We do have the ability to do it, but it is on a smaller scale than we would like. And so what we're looking for is having the ability to have that as part of the actual process.
Great. Thank you.
John, the inspector, the number of inspections for engineering and so forth, is this going to be a just short-term bubble or is this something that's going to be protracted the next six, eight, nine months? What's your thoughts on that?
My thought is, we're going to see this for a couple of months, two, three months, mainly because that's how long a lot of these projects are going to take to get to the next phase of development. You'll still see an elevated level probably for three, four months after that, but it's, you'll start to level off unless new projects start coming online that we have not seen yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mayan Council. What I did place before you is begin the discussion regarding the 2026 legislative priorities. We have been made aware, our lobbyist was informed that sometime in October is the planning that the legislative delegation meeting for Southwest Florida is going to be much earlier than it has been previously. We believe it's going to be the end of October. So we're not asking for a decision today on those priorities. We wanted to start the conversation. If there's anything further you'd like staff to be bringing back to you. We also are willing, wanting to go through the CIP and see where we could recommend some projects that are shovel-ready since that seems to be the priority of the legislature. We had the most success when we're further along in the process of that. Additionally, you know, any future CIPs that we want to begin the conversation with, those could also be not necessarily requests for funding, but there's priorities we could start to list to request for policy changes or as well as introducing them to certain future projects to get the conversation going, because sometimes it does take a couple fiscal years to get those projects moving. And with that, we were also going to recommend that we begin our CIP workshop process again early in November. We'll attach that to an hour earlier of a council meeting and work through each of the strategic priorities and each CIP project to that strategic priority so we can begin planning for the next fiscal year and begin those conversations.
Yeah, I think for consideration by both council and staff is one of the projects that falls under our resiliency and emergency planning and stuff like that has been a secondary discussion in terms of the use of the old library. And I think that within the funding purposes, that whether it be for the emergency services, additional agencies coming in, that type of stuff, we've talked about the tear-down, the reconstruction of a facility to support those emergency services and that type of stuff. And that may warrant consideration as we look to future projects to fund moving forward. Then I'd ask consideration of that, so.
Sounds good. Any other? Chris?
Yeah, I'd like consideration to be given to having, asking for funds to speed up or the Paradise Road project that we've got, you know, a couple of hundred new homes in that area. Paradise Road needs improvements in terms of traffic and safety for the residents out there, schoolchildren and so forth, so I would think that would be one. Second would be the legislative priority for funding of BERT, whether it's the purchase price or whether it's for construction monies. Would like to see that as a priority moving forward.
The only thing that I would add is, and we've talked about it, the aquatic complex that that is part of our discussions. And I know at the TDC meeting last week, we actually talked about that, and I'm thinking through it, TDC monies and county monies should be available to help us with that.
No, I'll comment when we actually focus on it.
What we can do is place this on the next agenda, and I believe we'll work with Hayden Dempsey to be virtual through the meeting so he can give some guidance on any of these as well. Any feedback you have for us in between, we're happy to update any of the legislative statements of priorities separate of the appropriations as well. The only other quick final updates I have is that our staff has been coordinating with DOT staff and Parks and Rec. We're getting continual updates on the beach access process of permitting, and we understand there's some construction to be started in January. There should also be a bathroom trailer, maybe two, that will be at the first beach, the main beach access as well. That's, if not in place now, will be in place shortly. And we've also started our conversations regarding the parking stall, parking base camera process so that it's more clear as to what spaces are vacant or available. That will be a comment note from our community development department to them to help us coordinate on that process as well. And then the mayor and council, mayor has been asked to be a speaker at Reis, that's the real estate and investment society in Fort Myers. I know that a lot of local elected community officials attend that. He is out of town. He has asked the deputy mayor to do the presentation. Staff will be present, but we do know a lot of consultants and folks who are regularly involved in community development process attend that. So we want to make sure you're fully aware that we'll get a copy of the presentation to all of council as well in case you get any follow-up questions on the presentation later on.
And when is that scheduled?
September 9.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving on to mayor and council member reports. Jim?
Yes. There is an item that I've asked Mike Sheffield to go ahead and copy you on. This is in preparation for a presentation I have upcoming in September. The most recent FDOT presentation for the widening of 75 and sound barriers and noise studies was basically postponed indefinitely. So I reached out to Nicole Harris, who's the project manager for that, and there were some rather things that we need to be aware of. One, there's no confirmed date or timeline as to when they're going to go ahead and reschedule it. They are currently in the PDNE study phase, and that until that moves forward, there's going to be, the original timelines that are put out there appear to be a situation where we'll have major delays. The biggest, well, there's two concerns beyond the delay. One is that any improvement, the expansion of the interchange on and off of 75 to Bonita Beach Road, the comments were officially is improvements to the Bonita Beach Road interchange are not included within the current PDNE study. FDOT limits continue to coordinate closely with the city and the MPO on long-term needs for this interchange, but no design or construction timeline has been established. Prior drafts indicated a 2040 to 2045 timeframe for addressing the Bonita Beach Road interchange. That now apparently is off the table. So I think that in our, in your action, Laura and Mayor, with the MPO is to get a better understanding as to what is going on with the Bonita Beach Road interchange would be greatly appreciated. Second is, they have drafted an approach for the sound barriers. Clearly, that affects our various districts that border I-75. The status that was provided, it's going to be conducted within the PDNE process to evaluate the reasonableness and feasibility of noise barriers along the corridor. The model validation has been completed, but the full draft noise study remains on hold pending the rescheduling of the public hearing. Communities will have the opportunity to review findings and participate in the process once the hearing is announced. And lastly is prior drafted timelines are anticipated to be extended at least one year beyond what was originally published, and that's all pending the completion of these public hearings. So this is a major area of concern because with transportation being a key issue and that ingress and egress off of I-75 on Bonita Beach Road continuing to be a sore point of multiple districts, I think that we just got to do what we can to make sure that that becomes part of the project and is addressed as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Nigel?
Mr. Mayor, attended the TDC meeting last week, and the good news is that most of the hotel rooms in Bonita Springs are back. As a matter of fact, it's 96.7 percent, so you take away a couple percent for ongoing construction, things like that. Those revenues will now be constant. They're back up and fully functional. The better news was that the TDC voted last week for the following, $22,000 for the Wonder Gardens, $22,000 for Arts Bonita, which is the old Center for the Arts, and $7,000 for our Bonita Springs Concert Band. And of course, that's all tourist monies, our bed tax money, so that money all comes to Bonita Springs. And I would encourage any of our business patrons that are doing things that might directly affect tourism to apply for some of these grants because it's a lot of money that's available every year. Nicole and I are not going to be working with the county again because they've decided that they, that the back of the band shell is not where they want to see their mural go, so we're going to look for another location. They would prefer if I'm correctly, a public building, but those are in short supply in Bonita Springs, so we'll work with them on that. But it's not that the money's gone away, but we will not have a mural on the back of the band shell. And finally, if you would all look, I'd asked Mike and Nicole, you've got two pictures in front of you of the pieces that the Art in Public Places Board had picked as their preferred for Midtown Project where we're getting the land from the developer for public art display. And if you look at those prices, what I'm actually pleased to tell you is that initially the prices started much higher. We went back to the artists who actually, if you'll, sorry, everybody knows out in front of City Hall, there is a large sculpture, and he's our artist. So the price that you see in front of you for Blue Water of $90,000, we got together with him, and being as we were going to buy two for that at $90,000, and for, and I know it still says heart on there, but it actually is going to be Loving Bonita will be the name of that piece, the giant heart. So that was $80,000 originally. The Blue Water was $90,000. By coming to an agreement with him, obtaining the two pieces combined, there'll be $135,000. So that's a savings of $35,000 to the city. And what I'd like from council is direction for Mr. Rooney to prepare a purchase agreement similar to what we've done in the past. similar to what we've done in the past where it would be staggered because each piece takes two and a half to three months to construct, they're huge. And it's all stainless steel. But if we could do that, Derek, and then if we can work out an agreement where he gets a minimal deposit for materials upfront, and we've done that before too. If there's any questions on that. Otherwise, Mr. Mayor, that's my report.
Are both going to Midtown or?
Yes, so what they gave us was the entrance, and that's a hu, I think it's 120 feet wide deep. They're going to put seating around it all at their expense. And then in the back, there's a roundabout, which is part of the entrance off Benita Grand. So they're giving us that land as well. And this is an agreement that went back, it's five years, six years ago that they approved? That's no, that piece would be Benita Grand, and then the heart would be at the main entrance.
Sounds good. Chris?
Well, do we need to do anything?
No, I think at this time, it's still going, from this, it goes back to the Art and Public Places Board, and then Derek would schedule an agenda item for the agreement.
Great. Wonderful job, Nigel. Thank you.
Art and Public Places Board picked the pieces.
Love them.
Couple things, while I was gone, I received an email from Morning Rotary that they, their foundation has provided the Wonder Gardens $30,000 for construction of an educational center that will actually be built by the Seminole Indian Tribe. It was also reported that the Wonder Garden had received $1.3 million for a capital project for a gathering spot in the southwest corner of the Wonder Gardens, close to where the grassy area is that, and thanks to Representative Botana for the hard work on that. It's hard to believe, but the 90th anniversary of the Wonder Gardens will take place on January 31st, 2026. And I think that you've all probably received invitations to the celebration of the opening of the Otter exhibit, which will take place shortly. I don't have my calendar updated as to when that is, but I think you all received that invitation. So that's what's going on there. And finally, I have a request that we go ahead and schedule a workshop on the associated dwelling units for the city. We had that at our strategic planning session. There's people that are interested in doing that. And I circulated, I think, to Arlene and so forth, what some of the other cities have done in terms of providing guidance to people, so perhaps that's a way we can get started. I know Jackie had indicated to me that community development was pretty well-prepared to move forward with that workshop and just needed somebody on council to kick the ball down the road so that, I guess that's what I'm doing, so I'm kicking it. Thank you. No, the ball.
Thank you, Chris.
The Otter reception is Thursday, the 28th at 9:00 a.m., so a week from tomorrow. And it'd be exciting. Went to the League of Cities this past weekend, and congratulations to Holly Smith, who is now the president of the Florida League, and she's vice mayor of Sanibel. If you don't know Holly, kind of everybody knows Holly, at least in our circles. And it was, you know, interesting time and interesting. Just, I don't know, I'll leave it there. Jamie?
In front of everybody today, there is the letter that we are currently working on, gets sent out to the property owners and San Carlos Estates. And that should be finished up and going out in the mail by Thursday, we're hoping. And I also attended the landowner meeting on Monday, the 18th. And when that is put out for the public, I'm asked Mike, our clerk, to please email all of council a link if anyone's interested in listening to the meeting on Monday. It'll be emailed to all of us. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Jamie. Benefit of going last is a lot of things I was going to talk about already got talked about, so. It, you know, it is good news, we're getting better bathrooms at the beach, two trailers, so people don't have to use supportive potties anymore. And they should be starting the project in January, approximately eight months from what I've heard. There was a, there's a petition going around to pause development on Benita Beach Road. Myself, Jamie and Jesse were named as the ones people should contact. I don't know why everybody wasn't on there or Jim. But it kind of makes us look bad on it because it says, has yet to respond, even though I know I've looked at the petition, I'm sure, you know, they have too. And even inquired about it to the people that put the petition out there. But until we put out our verbiage, it says that, you know, has yet to respond. But obviously, because of sunshine, we can't all put out a statement, so. I was thinking about doing one or just not doing it, I don't know what the best route would be on that, but. But just, you know, so you're aware that's going on there. League of Cities was last week, and again, congratulations to Vice Mayor Holly Smith of Sanibel, being elected to the president of the league. It's good that we have somebody in our local community that is in charge of the whole state's efforts to reach out to the legislation, so. And then also at the convention, there were quite a few workshops. Attended some in AI, best practices on the dais, smart streets, safety for e-bikes, which was anything really but that. It was more about contacting people, companies to put in those scooters that people can rent. So that one wasn't the greatest of workshops. And there was another one on Doge, which was at the same time that I was in another one, and everybody said that wasn't really very helpful on how to combat or, you know, work with the state with Doge. But all in all, it was a decent convention, so. And then one of the other things, they bring in companies from all over the state, and I did get some information I want to get with Lisa on. There's another, it's not exactly a bank, it's like a state investment thing where our funds that are just sitting in counts. They say they have better interest rates than the banks usually do. I think it was like between 4% and 5%, I don't know what we're getting now, but it might be something to look at. And then, oh, the last MPO meeting, you brought up the interchange for 75 and Benita Beach Road. They were talking about redoing 75 and that, and I had asked if we, I knew, I know the interchange is further down the road, but I had asked that while they're widening 75, if the bridge needs to be looked at in relation to when the interchange gets done later, you know, instead of having to, you know, mess it all up that they're going to be doing soon. But they informed me that most likely any interchange improvements would work with the existing bridge and what they're planning on doing, so. But the main thing is we need to get that interchange looked at sooner than later.
I just got it last, yesterday afternoon, and you'll receive a copy of what the project manager said, so.
All right.
Can you clarify one point, though, Mike, on the MPO? Are they also going to look at the bridge over Terry Street in terms of widening that?
If, well, they're widening 75, so if they need to, they would be looking at that. But I don't believe they're going to look at widening Terry Street, but.
But putting up a barrier, I think one of the things, anybody that's been on that bridge, that barrier is only four feet high.
Lot of questions.
All right, that's it for me. Any public comment? Seeing none, motion to adjourn?
Oh, my goodness.